Okay, I call the Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, Osage County Commission Meeting to Order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ow! Ooh, see, that's what I'm talking about.
I'm sorry, what?
So that's the lady, Mark?
Oh.
It just keeps coming. It just, it's just...
Okay. All right, big breath. Okay, roll call. We have Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Cooter, Les Holman will be by phone, and Clerk Michelle Morris. Additions or deletions to the agenda?
Uh, so, I think there was a treasurer payroll, is that right?
I did those under your guys' thing, if that's helpful.
Yeah, I see, we're gonna add treasurer payroll. We want that under new business. And then, um, executive session. Now, is the one with Colleen, is that the one she didn't need today?
That was my understanding about the email. It was kind of vague.
Yeah, I thought she said she did not need it, but...
That's my understanding.
Okay, I'm going to tentatively remove that because I did see that email, but...
I was kind of confused whether she made next week, because he's not gonna be here, or this week, so...
Yeah, she's rescheduling to the 12th, so, okay. So we can add, you wanted an executive session. And... For payroll, and then the, is it for legal counsel, or what's the exception? That's not the right term, I'm not using the right word, but... Okay. And then, you'd head on here, discussion of the budget docs and adjustment. I just, these were just on my desk, because I haven't looked at any of that. I think he had, I mean, the way I understood it is he had questions still for us?
Yeah, he wanted to look, we emailed you a lot, and we left those there. We wanted to look through them, see what you thought, have a discussion. There are a few tweaks that I sent in, I've got some more numbers that go popping in. But you just kind of want to know where you guys sat right now.
Yeah, I mean, there's like seven pages of questions.
Did you, we need to put a PBC on there too, somewhere? Or is that on there?
It's on the next agenda.
Oh, okay.
It's a while back, so it's a little bit now, so...
I gotcha. Yep, I didn't see it.
I'm sorry, what, what'd you say about PBC?
I didn't see it on the agenda, but it's on a separate piece of paper, so...
Okay, yes, I see. Yeah, we had talked about...
My observations.
Well, I guess if Les is on the phone. Do we need to call, uh, Les?
Yeah, he said that he would definitely chime in on the bureau stuff, and I could also reach out to Chris to see...
Okay, I mean, sorry, I got sidetracked. We were adding things to the agenda, I'm sorry. So, we did the executive session and the treasurer payroll. In regards to the discussion of budget documents and adjustments, I don't have anything, because I, I got these on my desk.
You just got your comparative copies, yeah?
Yeah. Well, and I think it's a thing where we're gonna have to maybe set a time, and we just work through his thing, and just go through the item by item to where we can discuss that. So do you want that added today, or not? I don't have anything to input at this time. Les might.
He may, yeah, I don't know. I'm not, I'm probably not in the best shape for a discussion on that either today.
Okay, we'll, we'll add it, and then when we have him on the phone, we'll ask him if he has anything for discussion on that.
Yeah, I mean, we might have to have a specific work session or something, you know, dedicated mostly to...
All I ask on that is some sort of a answer we kind of need on it, because it's almost all right.
I know it.
And the end of the year, so it's only gonna get busier.
When does your election stuff start?
Um...
Real quick?
October. And then right up until October, maybe budgets are gonna be thrown there too, with that levies. I just wanted to get on the back burner, because it is, it is a large process, and I know that we were trying to do financial policies along with it, too. I think we have some pretty good drafts, to what we're just kind of tweaking things.
Yeah.
We'll have to recreate a whole entire thing.
No, but...
Well, we'll leave that on for today, and if Les has anything to add to that. Um, hi Josh?
Kind of more of a timeline, I guess, to what I believe you guys, so we can kind of hold each other. Yeah, well, if you need something else, you can get it.
Okay, is there anything else, Brandon?
Looks good, Heather.
And anything, I don't think we have anything else to remove. So, I would need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
As amended. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda approved, okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
There he is.
There he is. You wanna do the PBC while he's here? Knock it out?
Sure.
Because we're public and all that stuff.
Oh. Anyone here for public comments?
No.
No public hearings? Do you have any correspondence for us?
Not.
Okay. We'd have to recess?
Yeah. Yeah, just, yeah.
Is there anything official I do to recess, or I just say we recess?
Recession.
We recess until
Yeah.
during the meeting.
Say that again.
We'll be in recess.
You don't have to give a time or anything?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. I will recess the meeting, we'll be back at 9:20. Fred, if you want to come up, we're gonna do the PBC.
Yee-haw.
Yee-haw, and I'm gonna let you lead it. Um, there is... Did you get that? There is an email that has the...
Bill or whatever on it?
Yeah, there's a bill or something with it.
Got all your hanging done?
No.
Let me see, okay, all right. Do you want to call that meeting to order? I'll let you lead that.
Yes, I'll call the PBC meeting to order, so we can pay a bill.
We're also gonna do this after. That's from a couple weeks ago, or a month ago, actually.
Seems like just yesterday.
Oh, it's approved, yeah.
We decided we need to prove those in this meeting, not in our commission meeting.
Oh.
So we were holding that. Isn't that correct? We hadn't done that since July 8th.
Right, okay.
Michelle, as far as your minutes goes, that old copy of the minutes is, we're not go, we're going off of this, the newest one, right? For July 8th? We had this before, but we're not doing, is that what it says, right?
Yeah, I just kind of like write it out there.
Yeah, okay, so that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is that the one I handed him? Make sure I handed him the correct one.
The one with more writing on it.
I don't know what you handed him.
I don't know, I don't know what he has.
Yeah, this was in the back of today.
And the one that he has in his hand, that has the sticky signs, is the ones we're proving that he designed, that Fred has.
This one, this one.
This is what I have, so is that not the one we're doing?
I got one with more writing on it.
I'm working on it, you guys need a second?
So like, she had meetings for the, minutes for the same meeting, but then this was just fleshed out further.
Right.
So like, that's the short, that's what we were gonna approve before, but we decided not to, back on the 22nd.
Sure, it was an PBC meeting.
Right, so this is the latest?
I changed the approval name to...
Okay, so I'm, so this is the one?
Yeah.
Right.
There's a pair of the same information is there, I just
Okay.
added it.
Yeah.
Pitch that one out, makes it easy.
All right, so, we'll do those.
That's right, there you go, file 13.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the voucher from KBS dated 7/23/25, in the amount of $70,242.32.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We will submit that to the commissioners. Also approve the PBC minutes on the Tuesday, July 8th, as
Presented?
presented.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay.
Do you need to sign that? Oh, I know, I guess we have to do that.
What?
Sign that in the commission.
Right.
Those we could sign here, without meeting minutes.
Right. Okay. You guys need to sign it.
I didn't have you on it?
Yeah.
We'd let you sign it if you want.
No, scribble on it or something.
There you go. You wore your wrist out, that's why you have to wear that brace now?
Yeah.
Signed too much stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Let's sign this one. Right? Yeah, this is by the regular commissioners.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay.
We'll let Heather sign that.
I think you signed that last time, Heather, please your vice chair.
Yeah.
Right.
Will we, will I do that in the other?
Oh, yeah.
Right, okay. Okay, move to close the building commission meeting.
Second.
Aye?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're closed.
Good job, Fred, you're, you're efficient, I tell you what.
Okay, I resume the Osage County Commission meeting for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. I'm gonna let you do that. You always get confused with how it works.
Yeah. Okay, so... Do I have to, on this, uh, bill being presented by the PBC, do I need to state anything, what it's being paid from, or anything like that, or just acknowledge and approve it?
Invoice, move to approve invoice whatever in the, where L...
Oh, there it is.
PBCs.
All right, all right, so we've been, presented a bill invoice number 25-0723, in the amount of $70,242.32. I move that we pay the bill as presented.
Do we say out, out of what fund? I mean, or did you already say that?
I did not, but...
It's going to be a law enforcement center fund.
Law enforcement center fund.
Okay, second? Or did you say you needed a motion?
I moved.
Okay, second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Right?
Okay, what's that? Do you need a...
The new.
Has Jay been coming down and signing these and saying president?
No, message is to say president.
Okay. I did. Just wondering if officially, if that needs to be on the agenda? When we, when we bring it back to the commission meeting to approve it? I don't know, since we approve it in the meeting. Does that need to be on the agenda when we're sending the PBC bills back to us to approve and pay? Or since we're approving in the PBC?
How important is it to have Jay here?
Oh, no, I don't mean Jay, I mean just, since we brought it back to the meeting, and then we approved it in the meeting, does that need to be on the agenda? No?
I think you can just conduct normal business.
Okay.
As PBC, just given notice, you're gonna meet, you can do all your...
Okay.
So you don't technically have to have an agenda.
Okay.
You can make two separate agendas.
Okay, so that all gets recorded in the other meeting, all right? Okay. Josh, remind me what your timeline is?
I'll let him.
And we just have one executive session?
I think so.
One or two? Okay. Brent, while you're here, why don't you come on up? Says Brent Rose, Health Department sewer.
Yes, so I have a problem. I know I have a quote. I was hoping to get one before the meeting, so basically I'm asking for a line chat. So... I don't have a number. I have a ball mark and I'm bigger than probably 3,500.
What's the issue? Are just a break or leak?
The building, it's, they've jacked it up, the concrete's shifted, it's been bad.
It's a slab, right?
It finally got through to my board, actually broke the joint underneath the floor.
It's been bad a long time now. You go in there, I mean, there's a huge...
Oh, yeah, the, the tape on the carpet, so we tripped up one of the cracks, so... But, uh, they came in, they ran the camera, and they're, I mean, you can see the damage, and it's underneath one of the floors in the examination rooms. So that means they're having to pull the carpet.
Cut it up.
Dry it up, cut out the concrete, pull it out, then fix, and put it all back. We found this out Thursday, but I was asking for a quote before, and, and then they've been back a few times to polish the line.
Yeah.
They can continue to do business, so I didn't know that that was an emergency, since we're not letting alone. But it's, I mean, they're coming back every two or three days.
So you're going to get a quote from some companies, or you're just having this?
It's the ones that all the...
And they can't give a broad idea? Because I mean, we can approve up to a certain amount, I don't think we can approve just...
Well, that's where I'm at, because I was, I was asking for that.
You thought, yeah.
I was looking for a bag, just to say it won't be more than this. It'll be this or that.
Not to exceed, yeah.
I reached out to him yesterday, and he's like, well, I'll text him again, and I haven't heard anything else. It was on my email, I don't know, I gave him a year or a month for something. But I, I mean, if I had to guess, I'd say probably 3,500, but I don't know.
Josh, can we do that without having any bid or anything? Just give a dollar amount, or, to me, it sounds best if you just say, you gotta have something.
You can, you can do a not to exceed, I mean, but I don't know, it's still...
Is it time sensitive?
Pretty much, it's, the longer it leaks underneath the, the concrete, the worse it'll worsen, uh, possible problems, and the longer. It's, whether it's a flat line, um, is considered an emergency or not.
And why couldn't they give an idea? I mean, if they're the ones coming and flushing it out, why can't they give an idea?
The idea guy, I guess, is busy.
The what guy?
The idea guy, I guess, is busy, I, I was kind of a...
If you have a number that you don't think it'll exceed?
I, I wouldn't, I guarantee it won't pass five.
Thousands?
Yeah, I think it's three.
Yeah, I would say not to exceed six.
You said 3,500, now we're...
You said exceed, I, I think it's...
I just, I mean, emergency, it's gonna be higher, if you needed more remediation, so...
Yeah, you were probably dealing with service tech, so you needed somebody that's gonna bid a job.
Okay, can I see what you have?
I just didn't think it's, I, I was hoping to have a number, if anything, I wanted to make you aware, because I don't think we can wait another week.
Right, well, you wouldn't if it was at your house, you know?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So on this, is there a way that we can put not to exceed on this voucher, or purchase order?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
No, ma'am.
So I'm gonna say, we, I would have moved to approve purchase order number 4028 to Teal Plumbing, not to exceed 6,000, to pay it out of the Health Department fund, for a plumbing repair at the Health Department building.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do I just write that underneath there, not to exceed?
Sure. You don't want to go cut that up yourself, huh?
No, that's, like, I might get a saw and... Tools, tools are the name of the game.
Yeah.
If you got the tools, it's pretty easy.
Yeah, hot saw and...
Yeah. You can barely get in the mess.
I'm about qualified to hold the shot back to, back in the dust stuff, that's...
Yeah, I don't know how we're gonna do dust control in here as well, but I guess I'll have to figure it out. And then, and I will try to make sure we don't really bring here that maximum maintenance facility.
Just a very odd question, I'd like an open ended.
Me too.
Check, no, sorry.
I guess you'll have a report back to us whenever that's done, though, huh?
And then, a little bit of guidance, so, I got the information from TKE to do the elevator. I reached out to Cone and the other, the other company, whatever, and asked if we were under contract with TKE, and I said yes, and they went dark.
Is that, is that for maintenance, or is that when we're looking at pricing to replace it?
Replace, replace it at the 199.
Well, I would think multiple companies would be okay with bidding for replacement.
I would have thought, but I've gotten nothing out of the other helping.
Really?
And then Cone, they're out of New Jersey, and they were, once I told them we were under contract with TKE, they just were like, that was the end of that. So I'm really living on the number of companies, and if we can reach out to, there's four of them in the, in the country.
Yeah, I'm experiencing similar things with water tower inspections.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on, but everybody has enough work, and I'm interested in what it is, but so I will continue to try to get more bids, but...
We need something to price compare to...
I'm running out of resources.
Idea.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could get just a shot in the dark from somebody.
Uh, well, we'll see if I can make a phone call.
Yeah, I mean...
I sent them, I copied, because scope of work.
Yeah, the only number I've ever heard was, oh, a hundred thousand dollars a floor, is what, is what?
Which I was
That's...
that it was less than the 300 that I thought it would be.
Right.
And then it was the new firework system, and all, there's a lot of upgrades, but...
So that's the only number I have to go off, because I don't, that's not my world, I don't do that stuff, so... But that's the, that's the number I've heard before in conversations.
Uh, I will see what I can find, as far as something else, and go from there.
Try again.
Because then we'll have to do the scheduling, and we'll have to figure out, because our only ADA compliant female restorant is
Yeah.
third floor, so we'll have to make adjustments in this restroom in order to make it ADA compliant.
Yeah.
Which is a stall thing, I think we've got to figure out, and this thing's gonna be a problem.
So how do we usually go about that? It could be like, what, you say, two, four, six weeks?
Two to four, but not to exceed, they thought two to four, they could get it done.
From when they start to finish?
Cutting the elevator.
I don't know.
I mean, we can't be the only ones who count this, but...
I don't know, I assume that you would have to make accommodations for like Zoom meetings or something or other, for people who were needed to go upstairs but couldn't go upstairs. I mean, you'd have to be, you'd have to, we'd have to set up a kiosk or something downstairs, possibly. I don't know, I'm sure, you're right, I'm sure somebody else has done before.
Documents that are going up, and like, let's say you're going to the Treasurers Department, and you, someone would have to take your documents... Documents that are going up, and like, let's say you're going to the Treasures Department, and you, someone would have to take your documents up, do stuff, bring it back down, I mean. I don't know.
That's a good question, Michelle, thanks for having all the great questions.
You should kind of really tackle that first.
Yeah.
Yeah, have a plan before we schedule the replacement.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces, and then, like I said, not being able to get the.
Yeah, I can't even get another.
So, we'll have to do some scheduling and figure some stuff out, but I will reach out to those other ones again and see if I can get them at least.
Did we do a, what is it, where you post it, where you put it out for bid?
You can have very limited people, I mean.
Elevators.
Yeah.
It's not like.
There's a lot of.
But it'd be nice if somebody would be.
I'll reach out to Cone and see if I can get them, obviously, I don't want to even get any back, you know, so.
Have you checked with like the state of Kansas and see who they use for their elevator provider service? Maybe they might have some other vendors they use.
As far as I know, there's four, I've reached out, three of them, three of the four. There's a new one that the last one I talked about, they just spun off one of the other companies. So as far as I know, there's only like four that do it.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Dig a little deeper, I guess.
I was going to get you a guess on this.
Yes, please. Yeah, we could always amend it if we do.
If you want me to hang on to this one.
Did you guys approve it at that, and what quotes from that?
Not to.
I mean, we approved it not to exceed six thousand, if you were able to learn something today and you want to bring it back with something that's more accurate, we can always amend it, but that's where we're at.
Or just give us what, yeah, if, if not, let us know what happened, how it went, all that, you know? Debrief us on it.
And thank you.
Okay. Josh, let's go ahead and do the executive session, we'll get stuff for you done early. If that works for you. And, Michelle, how much time do you want on your?
Fifteen and less will be joining us by phone.
Okay, so I would.
You want to get him on the phone first, or do you want to make sure we can get him?
Come back in five, Phil.
Did you get haircut?
Caroline.
Did you say hairline or Caroline?
Caroline.
See, it was, see, I said, I heard hairline and Caroline.
Yeah, you're, you're both right.
You ready to move to executive?
I have a parody song that I want.
Right. Which I'll see you.
Sweet Caroline.
You're setting on a million dollar idea there.
I know.
Just keep setting on it.
I would move that we go into executive session for a matter of fifteen minutes for discussion of payroll for, with the exception of legal advice. Josh, is that right?
Yeah, justification is legal advice, the topic would be payroll.
Payroll. With Josh and I, Michelle Morris, Commissioner Holman by phone, Commissioner Cooter and Commissioner Smith. Returning at nine fifty-five.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Do I have to say we're out of any...
Yep, we're out of binding action taken.
What did you say?
No binding action taken.
No binding action taken in executive session and I would move that we extend executive session under the same terms unless I need to repeat it all for a matter of 10 minutes returning at 10:08.
Say it.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Is it the little slide 13, is that what we're looking at?
Slide 13 has first year net total, is that what we need to...
Include in the motion?
Yeah, I just need to know what's the accurate...
That looks accurate to me.
Russ, did you have that eight four... Little viewing? Or just printed off, that was January 27th as the...
Is it that one?
Yeah.
This is kind of a breakdown of how they got there.
Yes.
But I think that is the total amount.
It looks like it to me.
And I don't know if you want to add that...
And I don't know if you want to add that if they need to custom make our GLs and say number of five thousand more time.
I think, I mean, I would.
Well, we're just entering, we're.
I would say entering.
Yeah, we're not signing it yet.
And then if there's those items, we'll just bring those in and.
And where did you guys see?
Yeah, we got you.
Les, did you have any other questions? Oh, sorry.
He gone.
Are you there? Please leave your message for.
Ain't gonna happen.
Does he want to answer by text? Can we take votes by text if he's texting?
I prefer not.
Yeah, that's fine. And we don't have a contract to sign, so we're just in, we're just.
Right, approving Michelle to enter in contract.
Right.
With Paycor, subject to legal review.
Right, because we don't have it, we don't have a contract.
Please leave your message for.
Do we need to say this, the price summary then? Do we have to put that within the motions?
I would, I would say what the, because we at least know what the introductory, I mean, what the base price is and then what fund we're going to pay it out of.
If you can text him and tell him at some point he needs to call in to do payroll, please.
I would just make this a part of the meeting record and just based on the proposal.
Okay.
You want to make the motion?
Yeah.
Make sure I have the price in our, what fund?
Zero zero one, zero two, fifty, two hundred.
Which is, I don't know the numbers.
Or contractual.
Okay.
All right, everybody ready on that one though? Move that we allow Michelle to pursue a contract with Paycor. Looks like their proposal has a price tag of twenty-one thousand nine hundred fifty dollars for the first year net total. This would be paid from clerk's contractual account, zero zero one, zero two, five two, zero zero.
Did you make that motion or did you say?
I moved.
Okay, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. That's done. Did you have anything else?
Yeah, I can wait. I just want to talk about my contract.
Okay.
It's on the agenda, but it'll take two minutes.
I don't see it on the agenda. Do we need to add it?
If you're willing, if you want to wait.
So then I'll amend the agenda because she needs, she wants to add an item. So can I just amend the agenda for your two items?
Yeah.
You ready? So I would move to amend the agenda and add a discussion of the legal counsel contract. And.
Transient guest tax follow-up.
And a discussion with Colleen Mendoza regarding the transient guest tax proposal.
Say again?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion, let me add that. Colleen, do you want to come up?
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to add to the agenda. I just wanted to basically give everyone an update from our conversation on the Osage County transient guest tax. As a follow-up, just wanted to reconfirm that we published the resolutions in the local paper on July thirty-first and then also upcoming August seventh. And then, once we complete that process, within sixty-one days or so, basically October twenty-first, we'll come back together to vote on what a future rate could be for Osage County. So wanted to reconfirm that. Also wanted to reconfirm that the Department of Revenue received our paperwork. I think they thought we had our stuff pulled together and we were able to execute the two percent for the October first. So we will begin to see that revenue for fourth quarter.
So they've accepted that?
They confirmed it and accepted.
Okay, because that was a thirty-day requirement they had to accept and now they can move it towards October.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. And they accepted the charter that where we stated not to exceed eight percent. So they accepted both documents.
That won't be effective until after the protest period. At the time that it becomes effective, then you'll have, like we talked about last time, the option to do by ordinary ordinance, something more than eight percent. So, once that becomes effective though, we may have to re-execute another ordinary ordinance because we basically said the statute that we started with were no longer recognizing through home control. So under our own charter, we'll have to do the same two percent maybe for January first.
Okay.
If we get that down before December first.
Should be fine. Okay, got it. So that was just a quick update. I wanted to make sure you folks knew that the Department of Revenue was on board. There are a few follow-ups that I wanted to share with you folks. So I am going, I'm going to be crafting this letter to all of the short-term rental owners with instructions. And I'll be sending that out, but I just wanted to get your counsel. We won't do that until this time period, this publication time period is done, right?
Right.
Okay, all right.
So it's already published once? And then when will be the second?
August seventh is the next one.
Okay, so you have to send it this Friday.
This Friday, okay, got it. That's what I wanted to ask. And then the other thing that I wanted to make sure is, although I requested it, I want to see if there's a formal process to add the transient guest tax line item or revenue line to the Economic Development Department. Is there a formal process to do that?
Is it a fund? If we add a fund or line item, do we need a resolution to do that?
Yeah, I can create a resolution that would create the fund. It will be for the purpose of receiving that tax into it and it can only be used for perspective purposes. And once it's there, any requests for expenditure out of that unless. What are you imagining that you would submit out there to be approved?
Well, I think we'll have a, I think we'll probably, first of all, it's going to take quite some time to build up. I mean, right, I mean, I'm envisioning a year or more, right?
And it's fairly limited on what you can use it for.
There, yeah, it's only towards with. It's only towards tourism activities, by the way, which equates to local promotion and driving more visitors and more visitor spending to our small communities. That is the whole point of this. And I think my vision is that we would have some strategic planning around that. Write some dialogue about what those investments look like.
Having one in plan.
Yeah, yeah, that would be my vision.
Sorry, I wasn't trying to minimize the ECO DVO.
No, I just want to be very clear.
That's not even a proper acronym for it. That's poor spelling.
ECO DVO?
Yeah, D E, not D O.
He's stuck on this abbreviation.
People use words that have no meaning.
Okay, so bottom line is we need a resolution. Is that something that can be done today or?
No, I prefer to just do it. I can hack it out.
You have to do that.
So you're, whatever resolution we need.
I mean, if you unwrap the resolution.
No, I just want to follow whatever's protocol and get it done.
Yeah, I'll, I'll create a fund and submit it. You guys can pass it next week.
Okay, the resolution, okay.
All right, thank you, Josh.
I guess, maybe, we'll see.
Thank you.
Well, I think, I mean, a fund number, is that going to come from the clerk? I mean, she has to create the fund number or you just?
No, you just create the transient guest tax fund.
Okay. And at some point, the number has to get assigned to it though.
I'll give him my, the ECO DVO information in case he needs to go out for this.
Colleen, I did have some questions from the public on that. And I assume maybe your letter that you'll send out may address some of those, but were like hotels or, you know, part-time lodging like that, they were confused on what that would mean for them and what it would change in their process, so.
If they have three bedrooms or more, then they would basically be submitting their tax.
Per unit or per, I mean, like, so if they're just renting a room that has one bedroom or whatever or?
It doesn't qualify. And that's what, that's what my letter is going to be.
Yeah, I didn't know, and I said, well, I can find out, but.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be glad to, I'll make every effort to try to make it as clear as possible.
Perfect.
Direct them to me and we're going to add the state contact, basically the links and the instructions on where they'd go to to try to make it as easy as possible.
Perfect, all right.
And then there's one other thing. The Department of Revenue had said that there is a tax entity report where we need to identify who would have access to these reporting. And of course, economic development, but I also think that our clerk and our treasurer should have access to that as well. I want to make sure you guys are good with that. If you are, okay, I'm going to send that to them so that they're aware of it. And I believe that's all I had. I just wanted to make sure I followed up.
All right.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, next, Josh, if you want to talk about your contract.
Yeah, and Colleen, if you want to stay, I don't know if it's still relevant or not, but we've been on contract since twenty twenty-two, I think. The last time we did a contract, it was for eighteen months, I think in July of twenty twenty-three to, that was eighteen months to go to the end of twenty twenty-four. I kind of just continued on, now we're in August of twenty twenty-five. And one of the major, well, the most major change in our firm over the last five years has been that Ryan Krieger, my partner recently became a U.S. attorney for Kansas and is no longer, he's divesting our firm. So the pitch, so to speak, to Osage County, especially since this has kind of been my client, of this being a firm endeavor and may send different attorneys, has not ultimately been what's happened as I've kind of grown comfortable in the role. I wanted to ask if you guys consider converting me to an employee starting January first. That would eliminate the need for, you know, as we raise our billable hour rate, that we come back with five percent, seven percent, whatever. And we, I would just agree to track with whatever across the board raises you do for other employees. It's beneficial to me just from a caper standpoint. I've been a capers retirement participant for ten years or whatever. So that was the ask. I know there'd be potentially additional FICA costs and capers costs. I wouldn't need benefits, but with the just employee switch, it'd be additional costs and I'd be happy to discuss with Michelle or you guys just about what's kind of fair as far as like tracking with the other costs that have gone for other employees since the last time we passed for a raise in twenty twenty-three. So, and then I'd just track with the other raises if there are any.
So we wouldn't have a contract? Are you, so you wouldn't be salaried? You'd be hourly? We'd have to determine an hourly rate?
No, I'd be salaried.
You would be salaried, okay.
I'm exempt because I'm an attorney from FLSA. And so I'm.
Looking.
I do the same thing as Jefferson County employee. The other thing that's interesting about the county counselor is that it's an official role that you have to appoint a person to and not just a firm. And so when we came to you, we quoted the AG opinion that said you still have, need to have a government official, even if you're contracted with a firm. And so it fits very neatly with the concept of an employee even though I bring it on computer.
Okay, so if you want to start January one, we would just, do we, we would, would we take action on that?
I think you could get by consensus at some point and just approve that.
Fill out paperwork that.
We'd have to see his resume.
Yeah, we'd probably have to see his resume.
I'm happy to provide you my resume, organs and losses, but there have been tough losses.
I need some personal references too, not just.
Those too. I don't know what they'd say. I didn't have to meet with the background investigators for Ron's business. Anyways, it could be just consensus at some point, but I just wanted to throw it out to public session so in case anybody has questions about what that would look like. But if there's financial concern about additional costs, I'm willing to work to finance these.
A question related to, then how does that impact your scope?
So, yeah, I didn't bring that up. So you, for the last couple of years, I think, have been asking about a desire to have an additional eight hours a month. Is that still about the same amount devoted to some of the projects that you're doing so you wouldn't have to contract a firm out?
Right.
I've kind of treaded water on my other stuff, but I'm willing to talk about that. I don't know if the commissioners would want to invest in that as far as that salary or whatever. I'm certainly, my main, I would say the lion's share of my practice in conjunction with my office and appointed office in other areas is local government at this point. I didn't plan for that to be the case, but it just is happening.
So you're asking, like, if you were to get dedicated time, does that need to be an additional fee that would come out of your, like, contractual service budget? Is that what you're asking? Or what are you asking?
Yeah, just there, it slows us down. It's inefficient to kind of be begging for help. And I'm sorry if I'm not.
No, that's fine.
But, I mean, just to be transparent, it's like, so I would just like to, if at all possible, have dedicated time and a resource. And I know you try to be very responsive, so that's what I'm, yeah, and of course, I would be happy to budget for that.
Yeah, and that could just be the payroll, you know, if there's an additional payroll now, they could just subsidize the county counselor, whatever. I wouldn't want to do a contract and an employment. I just want to be an employee.
I got Les on here.
More for just food for thought for now, but.
Sure.
The main thing is to. Practice has changed given my partner's elevation.
Sure.
Les, are you there? Hello?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Josh was just filling us in on his request. His contract has, I think, expired as of January this year. He just introduced a discussion about moving to being an employee versus a contract with his firm since his firm status has changed because his partner is a U.S., was appointed as a U.S. attorney for Kansas. So he just started the discussion for that. Oh, Les is calling in. Oh, my gosh.
It doesn't need to be acted on today.
Can you, I don't know how to get the speaker phone, but he was calling in while I'm talking. He didn't hear a word I said. Are you there?
Your phone does not like me.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry, your phone, it's just.
Had you heard anything that I said?
I heard you start to begin that Josh was filling us in on the N B I.
Okay, so he had introduced a discussion that his contract had actually ended in January this year. And he is just kind of staying on per month as it is, but he would like. And he is just kind of staying on per month as it is, but he would like a discussion to possibly move to being an employee because the status of his firm has changed because his partner was appointed as a U.S. Attorney for Kansas.
Right.
So, and then he just, on the financial side, just look at kind of where he's at right now and then he would take as raises are given for employees, he would move along with that. Is that how you said it? Yeah, so he was.
If, if there are COLA raises.
If there's COLA raises or things like that, he would.
I don't think I'm going to get any more meritorious.
So that was the discussion that was entered and Brandon said we would need a resume and several referrals.
Love it. My only question would be just, uh, what, yeah, salary. Does it be the same as what we've been paying you? We're just making a chance to use an employee?
Yeah, so there's, with changing to an employee, there's additional FICA and additional capers. And the reason it's beneficial to me is because of the capers, um, deal. Just for these next three years, most of my clients are local governments and capers employees anyway. And so, um, if there are additional costs, I would be happy to work with anyone, Michelle, others, just to find the right sweet spot of what a normal tracking, uh, since, since the last time you guys approved a, uh, raise, what a normal tracking salary would be. But for shorthand, it would be whatever I'm being paid now would be my base salary. If there are additional costs due to capers and employer, capers and employer FICA costs, then we can adjust from there. And then added on top of that is Colleen's request for dedicated attorney work, uh, from me that would be paid out of the ECO DVO budget. So she doesn't feel like she's kind of begging for, for work and I can budget more hours per month just to service what Osage County's needs are.
Yeah, well, and that to me, uh, I think was a benefit to having you a little more, um, I don't know how to put it, directly to the entire county. You become an employee and obviously every office will be able to contact you. I don't think that it's above or beyond to just cover those capers and FICA costs, you know, as you would a normal employee. I don't know if we really need to adjust it now because you're going to be putting in more time by default. So I would be, I would be fine with that.
Okay.
I think you've done us a good job. I think, uh, I think we're looking at areas, so, yeah, I would be fine.
Okay, well, yeah, it was just for the sake of the discussion today and, um, we've got time because I wouldn't want to make the switch until January 1st.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
All right, make sure you get us those references.
I will.
Don't hang up yet.
Okay.
Are you there?
Yeah.
Okay, while you're on the phone, I want to do payroll.
Okay.
So do you have any questions on that?
I did not. I mean, we've kind of already hashed all that out. I think it is what it is at this point. I think everything looked as good as it can.
This is what you want? Okay, do you have any questions?
No.
The 763, which was that colored, that's the number you want? Okay, I would move to approve the August 5th payroll in the amount of $763,112.68.
Say again?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, aye. Motion passes. Oh, this is probably in the book that you want us to sign.
Yes, we have to.
Okay. Okay, so Les, the items we have left, we have a payroll change for Chris, a payroll change for the treasurer, and then we have meeting minutes and bills. So do you want to stay on the phone for that or do you need to go?
Uh, I think you guys are good. I've seen the AP report, everything looks good. I didn't have any questions.
Okay.
But I don't have Chris's thing in front of me, so I really wouldn't know anyway.
Okay, well, those, that was all we had left.
Yep, I think we're good. I think you guys will be fine, so let's get back to work.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome, bye.
Thanks again for you guys' patience.
Yes. We will recess.
All right. All right.
Okay, we are out of recess. Okay, so we've got a purchase order from Sheriff Wells and a payroll change. Do you have those? Okay, oh, this is a payroll change for the treasurer's office.
Oh, this is the treasurer's, okay.
This says purchase order and payroll change. So if we don't have those...
They weren't here very long.
Sorry, I was waiting, she's texting Chris, I was waiting until she was done to save the motion. Okay, you ready? I would move to approve the personnel payroll action form from the treasurer's office for a resignation of a Stacy Hollowell or Hallwell, effective 8/1/2025.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do I sign it?
Oh, yeah.
So, we've got meeting minutes for the 29th. Can you have yours copied?
Yep.
I know we approved the other minutes, the PBC ones, but that's the final to sign. Oh, this one over here?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought we signed it.
It didn't have it.
Is it over here? I thought I gave it to you. Check there. It might have gotten mixed with another thing, like if I sat along top of each other, but I thought we signed one for the PBC.
Yeah, this one over.
Okay. So this is signed.
Did you ever get involved in that, the latest rendition of that? The last week?
I don't know what happened.
I'll let you send a letter.
Okay. Any questions on the minutes?
Uh, no, not as presented, no. That's good.
I'd move to approve the meeting minutes for Tuesday, July 29th, 2025, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. I always get confused with the side one. Okay, so, bills, 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 bills. I'm going to have that book.
the valid debt of the county.
Is that what you're supposed to approve by statute?
Yep.
That's, that's how it's worded?
Yeah, I think so, I have to certify that it is the...
That's the payroll.
Valid debt.
Really?
It's...
So you're supposed to be privy to everybody's accounts?
I wanted to change that to left center, like, why am I the one in this picture? They want to leave it in the left. And they don't, it doesn't exist for, like, larger accounts, they can use their payroll, it's just this small county.
I'm sure I've signed that one.
That's, okay, this goes up here.
You guys think you don't make them look too miserable?
Yes, what did, you said you had a comment about something. You said you had a...
On there, there's some chicken scratch, so, one of the fees is, or one of the general ledger accounts is called diversion, and, uh, these are all payments from the county to something else. So, the, it might be being paid out of the diversion fund, but it's for an expert, so it should be contractual services, or if it's...
You're not paying the diversion.
Right, or it's, another one was to the Osage County District Court, that's one question I have for you, Michelle, is are they coding, they should be coding whatever.
They're coding.
Okay, so there, it needs to be, we can catch it, but like, it's just, that's why we need to know what fund it's come out of, either their general budget, equipment reserve, capital improvement, if they've got their own funds, or in the county attorney's case, diversion fund, and then you'll, you all will approve an expense for contractual services or, or donation to the fair board, whatever you're gonna approve out of what the request was from what fund. And so, they're locked, the general ledger account is called diversion, so that, I would like to change that. And then a couple of others, I think, one was personal services for...
It says Century Business Technologies and it's under personal services, and you put contracts, contractual question mark, which, yeah.
Yeah, should be contractual services.
Yeah.
But that's just, you know, but I will assume that you can correct that on your end.
Yeah, we can get the correction out, we've been putting, since they were the normal people, it would be coming out of personnel, and then like, yeah.
Oh, so that means personnel services?
Yeah, like...
They spelled, it's always been spelled wrong. Personnel is spelled personal.
But, well, if that's what you've done, stick with it.
You know, just because I'm here all the time, now, like, if a couple of the other ones are coming in help, then they're contractual.
That's fine, if there's a reason to do it, it's just when I said it's personal services...
I didn't say it's...
Like, what personal services are we providing?
Oh, so it's to Century Business?
And maybe, unless we have, like, an in-house all the time, maybe it doesn't need to have a personnel line.
Oh, it probably should, I, I was behind, this is our IT provider, which we do have a contract with. That probably should be contractual.
So, nobody, Trish should...
Because this is our base fee, isn't it, for like their...
Maybe, I, I'm smoking, so...
Yeah, I would, I, I think that would go into contractual under, I don't know what it's coming out of though.
Uh, it's gonna be like, 00124, it's gonna be, it's a 200, it's contractual.
So I'll just put the question mark with that, so. Yes, you, you asked for permission, you may go, you do, you need anything else from here? You may leave five minutes early.
Thank you.
It's all right, I don't think it required.
First we got his way down.
I don't think so. You know that?
Yeah, Josh, if you just want to email me that and compare it.
Yeah, uh, I think, I agree with your thought that having newspaper printout pre-fillable values, we should update that too, and have something we can edit on Excel, I, I like it.
I would just like to say, all of these need to fill out, so this is done, those are made of out.
I mean, the other way to do it would make a PDF, and you'd have required to, force them to fill in.
If you got time, just...
Okay, we'll be doing it.
Whatever the rules are, thank you.
Chris, you didn't get involved in any flagging out here on the highway, did you? Did? Bad deal. Well, the side streets aren't set up for big, big duty tours.
Michelle, he made little notes on there, on the one where, oh, wait a minute, this is tagged, why is this tagged?
In the back, you said.
Oh. Okay, so on this one, he has notes in there. Excuse me, I would move to approve the bills for August 5th of 2025 in the amount of
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Where's that? Oops. Okay, last, we've got Sheriff Wells' purchase order and a payroll change. Did I sign that? Did I sign on the right line? Did I spell my name right?
Probably.
Okay. You, I'm sorry.
We have a vehicle on the...
Yeah. Which reminds me, I forgot to call you after last week's meeting about that discussion that I could only hear parts of. I realized this morning, I was reading the meeting minutes, and I was like, oh, I forgot to call him, so, we're, this is literally the last thing.
I don't want to overdo it, sorry.
No, 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 you were, we were just finishing up, but if you have time, I'll just visit with you briefly before you...
Smoking deal. Did they sell to individuals too?
I wish, I would, I would too.
I can't even look at it. Close my eyes.
We should be in most of the, they're just trickling in, they're just all coming in once.
So they sell to government contract, government entities, cities, stuff like that too? Utility trucks, such like that?
I think they, they really feel like, uh, Josh, we've got that emergency management traffic, so, I think they can.
Public also water districts?
Sure.
Just theoretically?
I don't know, I was gonna...
Okay, any other discussion?
I know, I'm good, thank you.
It's okay, just making sure. Okay, I'd move to approve purchase order 4044 to be paid to Superior Emergency Response Vehicles for 2025 Ford Police Interceptor, amount of $59,366.07 paid out of the sheriff's vehicle fund.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion pass. Where's that? Okay. Where's that? Okay, now, where's these?
Next vehicle that we, yeah, I think we're gonna try to keep that, but it's possible it's just a little bit of a subject, that's, I know this, the safety controls are getting a bit extra, so.
They were out patrolling this weekend, I was camping. They actually stopped in? I was a little bluegrass camper, they stopped in, it's not, I didn't recognize the person, so I wasn't going around anybody. Oh, was this it?
He told me that, it said there was a music playing.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's bluegrass stuff, and that's my, that's my thing.
So, she had a public complaint, keep it down, yeah, that's what I was saying. That wasn't me.
I was in cognita, so. Okay. I would admit, I, I'm gonna do this in one, or I can do them separate if you want, do you care if they're separate or together? Oh.
That one's just a manager, really, she went...
This, this is who you're talking about? Okay.
So this one?
This one, she resigned.
Also wants to stay part-time dispatch, I didn't realize that until after we did the vehicle.
Okay, then I'm just gonna do it separate.
This is kind of just an amendment, pay, because part-time pay for dispatches a lot less than...
Okay, but we officially accepted the resignation, I believe, a week or two ago. We did, so I think, yeah, okay. So I've moved to approve status payroll change for Jackie Beatty, effective 7/31, Sheriff's Department rehired NRPT communications officer for 1956. I'm sorry.
Non-regular part-time.
Non-regular, part-time communications officer, in the amount of 1956, now.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. And then, move to approve status payroll change, accept the resignation of a Terry Ralston, effective 8/13/2025.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. I've seen this as where I signed my name, I never...
Looks good, looks good from here.
Well, if it's not, cross my interest, cross it. Okay. Okay, do you have anything else?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay, Michelle, do you have things?
See you.
I'll be right out there, if you give me like five seconds. Yeah, meeting minutes, bills, payroll, I got it all marked off, and, yeah, that's, okay. And I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We're adjourned.
Kachunk.